Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call to order, please. So I'll start off with our first People's Recognition Statement. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in spirit as gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as the gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors who were entrusted to give their mother birth since time in the morning. It is a deep humility that we acknowledge and offer gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side in the future. So, good evening and welcome. As you probably have noticed here, and I'm at my usual location at Council Chambers, we are here in Curry Hall, around the grounds of Royal Military College. Curry Hall is a recognized federal heritage building that was built in 1922 as a memorial to the Canadian Corps of the Canadian Expeditionary Force after the end of the First World War. The building was named in honor of Lieutenant General Sir Arthur Curry, who was a senior officer of Canadian Army during World War I. He had the unique distinction of starting his military career on the very bottom rung as a pre-war militia gunner before rising through the ranks to become the first Canadian commander of the Canadian Corps. So, the reason why we are here tonight is both our open government initiative, taking council out of the community, and also to celebrate local government leak this week, which of course inspires the importance of local government in our community. So with that, before we begin, I just wanted to have a call of council just recognizing and thanking a few of those who helped organize this meeting. First of all, from RNC, Commander Don Wiggaire General Sebastian Rocha, Lieutenant Commander Phil Carter, Mr. Jermaine Haddicare, and the Commissioners Team and the RNC Labor Crew Team, and from the city, our thanks to the State Department and the ISB team. So with that, we're going to do things the old-fashioned way tonight. So, let's turn our glass toward the roll call, please.
Counselor Holland?
President.
Counselor Cannon?
President.
Counselor George?
President.
Counselor Holland? Counselor Huferson? Counselor Huferson is present. Counselor McLaren?
Present.
Counselor Neal?
Here.
Counselor Osterhoff?
Here.
Counselor O'Sinnett? Mayor Patterson?
Present.
Counselor Stroud? Excuse me, Counselor Shell?
Here.
Counselor Stroud?
Here.
Counselor Turner?
Present.
Mayor Patterson, would you help a little?
Thank you. So we have under completed the whole closing meetings. They will move to approval of the edits. We have a motion of condolence and an item of communication. Can I have a move, please, by Counselor O'Sinnett, seconded by Counselor Fuller? All's in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Thank you. Are there any disclosures of potential temporary interest? Okay, CMA, we have no presentations tonight. We have no validation. We have no briefings. Are there any petitions presented? CMA, we do have one, uh, CMA, we do have one motion of condolence, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Turner, that the sincere condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to Big Ben Firefighter from the passing of his mother, Mrs. Etta Benford, who passed away on Friday, October 6, 2017. Thoughts are with the Benford family and Jersey City. All's in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Thank you. We have noted for your motions tonight, so we will move right to reports. First up is report number 103 from the CMA.
Moved by Counselor Holland, seconded by Counselor Cannon, that report number 103 from the Chief Administrative Officer Consent be received and adopted.
Okay, so there are six clauses in report number 103. Would anyone like to see those clauses separated? Thanks. Yes, Counselor Neal?
Uh, just to use my own steps.
Okay, so we're going to separate them. If I can just ask Counselors, when you're putting this here, the votes going to the mic? Just so that... Okay, so first we will vote then on the balance of the clauses. So clause one is provincial offenses division instant conditional grant agreement for language trade. Clause two, parking by law, minor events. Clause three, habitat for humanity, portable housing, and alcohol finding, 86 Taddy Street. Clause four, proposed contract 2017 to 2020 extending third Canada. Clause five, license agreement extension for temporary installation on Ontario Street and partnership of policemen accommodations. We'll call the votes on clause 1 through 5. All's in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Clause six, municipal GGG challenge line application. Counselor Neal?
Yes. I want to thank staff for bringing this forward. Some of us on council have been lobbying for a couple of trial electric buses for some time. Other communities have done it. And this is a great opportunity, given the funded support from the province, for us to do it. And I think we're way ahead of hurt on so many public transit issues that it's just, it's really good to see that we'll be able to, on a trial basis, have a couple of electric buses. This is going to be the way of the future. So, I appreciate the staff putting together this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stroud?
Your worship. Uh, yes, I'm also excited about this and, uh, and commend staff for seizing the opportunity. I was wanting to ask a question about the electric buses. So, when they go into service, we have an opportunity of keeping track of maintenance to prepare them for diesel because there's, I'm told, and I don't know if you've tested it here, I'm told that maintenance on electric vehicles is, is less costly than on diesel vehicles. Also want to make one call, maybe, that the electric vehicles are also a lot lighter, I've heard, than, than the diesel. And that's actually very significant. These buses do run late at night after children's bedtime, for example, and it would, it would give us that added bonus of more silent operations. But I wonder if staff can sustain those too, if the lifecycle analysis that we do and the noise.
Rocha?
Thank you, and to you, Mr. Mayor. So, yes, we will be tracking the performance of these two electric buses. And based on the research that we have gathered so far, and they have been tested in some communities, it does appear that there is a less maintenance requirement for electric buses. But that's something honestly that we will be tracking and being able to report back on. As far as noise, same thing, based on the research that we have conducted, we have also seen that it's going to be much lighter than the diesel buses.
Okay, any other questions or comments, Counselor Stroud?
Um, one question, I have a couple of questions here. On the, um, first let me say I'm really glad that we're here. We're the initiative, following the last one, just that, staying together is moving in that direction. But, um, I've got my question. So, on the solar PV system, in the... Okay. On the geothermal PV, solar PV system at the, at the I, the, um, will we be looking, looking to eventually use an array or a package of lithium-ion batteries in order to tie this over? Would we follow that, or how would that would eventually make the solar energy go further?
So, at the moment, this is in the very early climbing stages. Uh, the, the technology and the application is intended more from a, a, um, an opportunities perspective that we work through the installation of the solar panel and the heat, geothermal heating system. Um, but incidentally, the heating system will also be functioning for the current police building, so the building that's currently there, and for the public works administration. So, we'll be working, well, of course, I think in the next six months or so then, to, to ensure that we get those elements together and take that into account.
Thank you, because there are being, there appear to have been, um, significant strides in, um, with the ion-ion batteries, particularly when we package together, and which people are hoping will be the way which we bridge the gap when it's not done. Cold. So, I just wanted to put it on the, on the dockets, so to speak. I'm not saying that we can address it here, but we should have made a long-term plan. Now, another question was, the, the issue of, um, of electric buses has come up at the ITP two or three times in the time I've been in council. And now we're actually going to do it. So, and we didn't do it before because staff thought that the technology wasn't good enough for long-term trips and wear and tear, there's another reason. So, I did see any explanation why now. And I'm just interested what the technology change is.
Rocha?
Thank you, and to you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, as I indicated earlier, we have done quite a lot of research in terms of electric buses and now have been, um, significant changes in terms of the technology in the recent, let's say, probably year or two years. Um, they have also been implemented in a number of communities, some in Canada and a number in the States, actually, that have, are moving towards electrical legal. So, we have been able to track the progress and we believe to where the point where we could look at starting to integrate electric buses.
So does that have to do with the battery? Again? Uh, generating the battery?
To you, Mr. Mayor. So, yes, the battery is definitely one component. So, looking at the number of hours, for example, that the electric bus can run, is the key component, either number of hours or kilometers, depending on how they're measured.
CMA?
So, just sort of something about, so, technology is changing for the backup in this area. So, you would have had information as well from the trans and to Jeremy Hospital with respect to some considerations that we had to keep some time ago. And, um, and even in the discussions recently, when we were compiling this, this report and putting together the, um, the various projects that we would apply for, uh, there was still some concern with respect to the fleet management and the reliability of, of electric bus. But at the same time, we recognize that the technology is moving as quickly as it is and that it is an opportunity for us to test the pilot and introduce it as part of the fleet workforce.
Thank you. Just want to say one thing. A comment on the last, um, we took some heat in the paper and it was just for our last initiative from the last meeting. And I didn't say much, but I want to say now for public consumption, that unless these kind of initiatives take place, you cannot build a market. You can't build a market, you're not going to get the best possibilities in technological change and per unit performance at scale and so on. And, uh, but that seems to be overcome, part of average government initiatives. You take the loss of the front end and learn to gain it, hopefully, at the end, at the end of the day. And, uh, I think that's a point that's lost when people are just looking at the cost. There is a cost to greenhouse gas, um, reduction, but if you don't do it, the costs are huge and cannot be mitigated at a certain point when you get feedback loops. So, I'm more than happy to support this because we have to not just look to today for the major long-term. And if this is the way it starts, I guess it's the way it has to start. And so, I hope everyone supports this.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Favor will hold another again on clause six. So, I just favor, oppose, and that's carried. Report number 104 from the CMA.
Moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Deputy Mayor Turner, for report number 104 from the Chief Administrative Officer Recognizing and Acknowledging.
So there is just one clause, establishment of a planning advisory working group. Uh, this item was referred from our last meeting, so we are seeing the recommendation as amended from our last meeting. Counselor Stroud?
Yes, uh, we recall that we had a debate over this last round and are proposing amendment which failed. And I'm not wanting to make a little support, but I'm proposing again. But I think that, um, the, uh, the terms of reference can be improved somewhat very simply by another amendment, essentially just adding a little bit of language in between the fifth and sixth bullets of the terms of reference when we talk about the list of groups to call members from. I've probably written down, but I've been explaining it first for you so that, like, colleagues know what I mean. I'm just proposing to add a phrase after the five first bullets in the terms of reference, the top of the rural area, into western area, into these first peoples, adding a phrase there that would allow us to choose from the final three groups mentioned in the, uh, in the report, but not exclusively from those three groups because it's only a slot that we have the nominations committee has the option of pointing for whoever does not want, of one of those three last four groups, should they so choose. But the suggestion remains that we draw them from those three groups.
Okay, so do you have that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just going to take a moment to ask if the, uh... Okay, so we have a amendment on the door. It's moved by Counselor Stroud and seconded by Counselor O'Sinnett. Um, just a question to staff, first of all. So, this amendment proposes increasing the number of members from, I believe it's eight to eleven. Uh, so that's my first one.
Uh, that's not my intention. Uh, see, it's because it comes before those groups are mentioned. So, there's three more bullets, and what I'm saying is three more members. For example, from these three groups, but not restricted to these three. May, maybe I need to add more, my little friend with someone, but, um...
I can fit the board. So what you're proposing is that the amendment would be that we would take representatives from the rural area, Kingston West, Kingston Central, Kingston East, and First Peoples. And then that's where you're inserting that language to, so those three members could be from those areas.
So really, yeah, so what I'm, what I'm doing is saying possibly from these three groups, but not restricted to these three.
Okay, uh, Mr. Kirk, please. Okay, so procedurally, the amendments and orders, and Counselor Stroud, that's good.
Yeah, okay, so just, Counselor Hill just asked me to, she went to her last time. Basically, there's eight slots to recommend for besides the working group. This is a working group that can work with staff on the academy matters, advising staff directly. It's a good idea. It is coming from the province. We didn't have to stay on it. We have to create a group. Uh, the composition, as suggested here in the report, every, all eight spots are spoken for in a very narrow way with the, with the eight categories. In other words, staff is saying, suggesting that we, in order to have diversity, we have these eight groups covered. Now, I think it's pretty obvious, people have heard from members of community that there are other types of applicants that may not fit into one of those groups that may want to be on this, any advisory group and may actually have good input. For example, uh, if somebody who has bad experience, who's a member of a community association, might legitimately want to say, this is easy to, I have things that staff has to think about to avoid future OMB appeals, uh, because this is what happened on this, this, this issue. Someone, you know, who's been involved, uh, you know, actively with many issues. They wouldn't necessarily be one of these members. And you might end up with a member from, say, I don't know, say, North College gets one as institutional community, who actually doesn't, you know, they, they might be chosen by the nominations committee, but they might not have very much to add to conversation. That, that's the nominations committee's job, to balance the committee in a way that's also more functional, that's going to help staff. And if it's, if all eight spots are spoken for in advance, mandated by this bylaw, then we don't have that attitude to add, uh, a member from some, or even an unaffiliated person, just a member of the community, that doesn't, that, say, like, say there's already someone from Kingston West, and there's someone else from Kingston West, and applies a looks really good, and say there's two from Kingston West. We don't have that attitude because every single spot is spoken for the way it's written. So, if you have this language, and that gives us a little leeway on those final three spots that we can replace them with somebody else. It'd be up to the nominations committee, and it would still have to ask us. Thank you.
Thank you, very good. So, just to speak to you, then, please. Counselor Bowman?
Maybe we're shipping through you. I wasn't there, obviously, last week, but, uh, having looked at this and seeing what's already been amended and what was taken out, I do have some concern with the amendment. And the reason is, is that if I just support that, if you, you basically put this out and you didn't get anybody from those groups, then I think we could go back and kind of pick anybody, um, that applied and kind of re-advertise it. But I believe that as soon as you're putting definitions in there, you're also looking for specific skill sets on this group. So by taking that out and not having that in there, I mean, you're basically taking out the institutional community, Kingston Economic Development, and a member from the business community. And when it comes to the planning advisory or working group, there are three pretty key aspects where you certainly want to have input from those groups. So I think I'm going to go with, well, I know I'm going to put against the amendment. And the reason is, is because as soon as we start kind of changing the definition of this, it really makes me concerned about what we're actually going to get. We do need a certain level of expertise on this. The whole idea of this is, in a sense, to prescribe a certain type of diversity and to get those different sort of things so that we can make this panel of this advisory thing actually functional and to get all those different viewpoints. We really need to actually have all these different issues at work. So for that reason, I'm really going against the amendment. And I think that the way it's laid out here is, is actually great. And I think the original one in the board was even better.
Thank you. Counselor Neal?
Yes, thank you. Understood the amendment. Excuse me. I, uh, I think we should give a broader range and not be as prescriptive as this suggests. I'm, I'm thinking there might very well be, uh, an excellent person from a school of planning at one of our post-secondary institutions that may be very keen to put, bring their expertise to the table. And I've had an experience before where we've had institutional representatives. I'm thinking of the old Taylor Gannon Committee. And we all often had, and they were designated to groups, and they came, and then we were faced with core problems. Because somebody from, with a very busy life, from Queens or St. Lawrence, would look at the agenda and say, oh, none of this really concerns us, this meeting. And then we'd have three or four of those people making that judgment in their busy lives, and then we would have a meeting with them for it. So, I would rather have people who are enthusiastic about, about being there. And there are other groups not named here. I'm thinking of Labor Council, for instance. Uh, other groups that may very well have something to bring to the table. And so, I'll support this motion in the hopes that it widens the scope of those that may come forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, we do, sure?
Thank you, Chairman, I recognize you.
Thank you. Uh, I think there's a couple of things that we need to, to make clear. First is that the composition of the proposed committee is inclusive. There's nobody that would be excluded from this. Because if you live in Kingston, you're either going to live in the rural area, or the west, or the center, or the east. So, 100% of Kingston residents are eligible to sit on this committee. Nobody's excluded. The second thing is that, speaking to the amendment, those last three positions, institutional community, uh, I would suggest that they have an important part to play. I would suggest that the Kingston Economic Development, uh, representative, that this community also have important parts to play. There seems to be some, some concern that, well, the hypotheticals, what happens if we put this holder and don't get this representation? Well, it's actually very simple in that case. All we need to do is just pass an motion, reconsideration, and then amend it back. So my proposal would be to go against this amendment, pass it as is. Let's take it out, let's see what kind of interest we get. And at that point, you have a problem filling in those spots, you can always bring it back to council and amend it at that time. Rather than presupposing that there wouldn't be anyone interested in the institutional community or any of the other groups, I think it's important to move forward as is. So, um, as Counselor Bowman said, I also would vote against the amendment. Thank you.
Give it back to Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else on the, Counselor?
Thank you, your worship. I'm, I'm inclined to vote for the amendment because, as you may remember, I raised the issue of whether they should be guidelines rather than, um, strictures, which is what they are now. And, um, because the way the nominations actually works, because we call client discretion in the process, we're always looking still the slots in best possible. And in my experience, the nominations committee really tries hard. Like, if you put this out, whatever statute or status these, that these requirements are, the nominations committee will try very hard to make those work. And, um, so my concern is that we have a committee recently where we appointed, we've tried to appoint people, and it was very difficult to get, um, get it so that they would match up. We couldn't find the people that would make that committee work, and so it didn't meet for a very long time. And I don't know how it's going to work. In my, my experience, the, when we have an advisory committee... In my, my experience, the, when we have an advisory committee and somebody drops off, it just keeps coming. But technically, it shouldn't, I would argue, because the committee's supposed to be constituted this way. If it doesn't have a representative from any of these eight slots, then how does it, how is it properly constituted? So, so there are two problems there, and, and, and what I think the nominations try to do is make it work. Yes, then go back out and advertise, or we could do what the mayor suggests, but those are long, glorious processes, and that means, is the advisory committee actually functioning? And that's my concern. I want it to exist, I want it to function. And my argument, which the court rejected, but, is that guidelines would make it possible for it to function more easily. So, um, I think what the mover's trying to do is find a middle ground to make this work, and at least give us some better possibility to work in. And so I appreciate that, uh, concern and that, uh, possibility. And I, I do think that regarding these motions, we have to look at how nominations actually work rather than the way we want to think it works. And, uh, because we get, we, we get nominations, and people come in and they aren't actually real expertise at all, but remember the problem, that I've heard people from all ranges of politics argue on that committee, well, they deserve a chance, and we should give people a chance to serve their committee and their community. You know, it's not a bad argument, but it, it doesn't have anything to do with expertise, okay? And, um, and, and yes, there's a place for that. So I think that what's being proposed, at least tries to find a middle way to make that work and, and carry on so the committee can actually function. And the main thing is, this is mandated by the problems, and we should be trying not just to do it, uh, to the letter, but we should try to support the spirit, which is to make more community input. And I think this is an attempt to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendments? Council Kirk?
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. Um, I think we just have to start somewhere, and I think we, I think, I, I wasn't here last week, but it seems like we spent a lot of time trying to reformulate this. And I think we need to start somewhere else. I think we've got a good start here, we should go forward, even try, this is the first time we have to do this, and I think we need to start with a small committee and see how it works. If it doesn't work, then, as the mayor said, we can look at it and evaluate it. So I'm gonna vote with, against the amendment, and for what's currently written.
Thank you. Council Stroud, you have the last word.
Sure. I don't think we need to spend any more time on this, or to say that the, it is, I said this last week, I'll say it again, it is impossible with eight slots to actually, uh, cover all the bases of where, in advance, and like, without just the ball, of where the best applicants are going to come from. And, uh, and some of the slots are quite big. And, and the reason I put the bullet where it is, is because the last three bullets are the biggest of all those groups. The other ones are geographical in nature, except for the First Peoples, but the last two are quite big, because a member of the business community, um, that, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean that the applicant, they might satisfy that requirement, but they may not necessarily be someone that could be helpful in the management committee. So that, that leads up to nominations, but if they're not restricted by that particular structure, as Council Jackson said, they can slot in someone who obviously will have something to bring to the table. It's by reading the applications, and the, the, the people writing in their own words, why do they think they should serve on the committee? That interview process is almost moot if everything slot is prescribed by these, these narrow descriptors. So if the only way out all the way to is written, uh, right here, and if this amendment fails, there's other options, adding one to the number of members on the committee, so you've got an extra free slot to, to work with. That's, that's another possibility, but I think eight is a good number, and that's why I think the amendment should be.
Thank you. So first we will call the vote on the amendment. All was in favor. Opposed? And that closes. On the amendment, then, as not amended tonight, just as amended two weeks ago, is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Council Bob?
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. First, I question, so the, since it's not in your bill, it's in the report, and I just didn't have it from last week. You said, this committee is ongoing, is that correct? Like, if, if there are terms, people will serve a term on it, but it will continue. You don't want to hear.
Mr. Kirk?
Through you, Mayor Patterson, that's correct.
I think, um, one of the reasons that we seem to be spending so much time on this is because of that fact, the fact that, even though it's called a working group, um, it actually does seem to fit more within what we currently, the structure that we currently use for advisory committee. The Arts Advisory Committee, for example, Keith is another one that's ongoing, involves technical experts. Uh, whereas in, in this case, um, we heard from staff for the last meeting, that the intention is that it's a working group, where members of the public will work with staff, um, and that recommendations, as my colleague mentioned, um, won't come reckoned from this group. They will, they will, recommendations from this group will come, recommend a staff report, uh, to a committee or to council, planning committee essentially. So, um, I think, I guess I'm mostly concerned, this is title, and I'm not going to try to amend it, but, um, I do think we need to, I think part of the consternation over the composition of this committee has to do with the fact that members of the public understand that it's an ongoing committee that, that shouldn't have sort of ongoing impact on the planning process, uh, or the planning, or planning recommendations. But in reality, it's, they aren't, from what we've heard from staff so far. We're not really looking for a true advisory committee. We're looking to engage the public, uh, but not in the form that Keith or the Arts Advisory Committee currently operates in. So I think it would be clearer to us as councillors and, uh, members of the public if it were, I mean, I guess, I think it should, should just be very clear essentially when the call for nominations goes out, or call for submissions or applications goes out, that the work on this committee is very important, and we do require a high level of expertise, but we don't necessarily need the level of expertise that, uh, is indicated in the Final Peoplelet, and I know we've gotten that, but anyway, I'm just gonna leave it at that. I, of course, will support, uh, the recommendation, as is, and do my best on nominating this committee to make work.
Thank you. Council Ken?
Thank you, through you. Uh, the only thing I'd like to comment on, with regards to the structure of any committee, after being on the, uh, KECOR Review Committee, I do feel that a lot of times people became fixated on structures and committees rather than, uh, spending their time coming up with compelling arguments, uh, that they could convey to a committee. So, um, nothing is absolutely perfect. Uh, I do think it's a good starting point, as, uh, Council Turner had mentioned, but I do think, uh, it would be advantageous for people to come up with compelling arguments and to, uh, convey those to people, uh, in the most convincing way possible, so that, um, they're part of the democratic process, whether they're a part of a particular committee or not. Um, we all have emails, these committee, uh, uh, people in this committee will be able to contact in some way, shape, or form. So try to focus your attention on, uh, coming up with compelling arguments, if you are passionate about these different issues, uh, because I know after being on the KECOR Committee, I felt that a lot of people focused their attention on the makeup of the committee rather than, uh, coming up with proactive solutions to, uh, various problems in that committee. Just a comment.
Thank you. Council Neil?
Yes, um, I share some of the concerns that were expressed by my colleagues earlier, and I brought up a couple of issues last week. This will be the, uh, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but this will be the only advisory working group that exclusively, that is appointed by council, that exclusively advises staff and not a committee, uh, uh, any other relevant committees. Uh, I think, and, and I agree with Council Hutchison, I think the spirit of the, uh, of the ministry asking us to have, uh, a planning advisory working group is so that there'll be meaningful, legitimate public input into the process. I was somewhat reassured when I asked about, will minutes be made available to the planning committee and, and, uh, council? And I believe I heard the answer, yes, they would. Uh, so it's, I guess it's incumbent upon us to read those minutes and decide if staff, for whatever reason, don't wish to bring something forward that comes out of this committee, we should have, uh, we have a possibility of doing that as councillors. But I think the spirit of this is, is not just to look like we have a more open government with public input, but to actually achieve that. I'm looking forward to seeing those recommendations that come out of this, that staff bring to planning or council, uh, and I'm often somewhat cynical, but I'm going to vote for this in the hopes that indeed that's going to become, uh, recognizable in the future, that there will be real, meaningful input from this committee through staff to the appropriate committees. And frankly, if it fails that test, perhaps a future council can alter the terms of reference in order to make sure that that happens. But I think that's the intent of the Planning Act recommendation, so we just need to be assured that that happens, and I'm looking forward to that happening in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take it, sir?
It's the chairman, I recognize you.
Thank you. I just have one question for staff. Is the intent of this planning advisory working group, is that we would have meaningful public input from the members?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Have a gentleman chair.
Okay, so with that, we will call the vote then on the clause as amended. All was in favor, opposed, and that's carried by the twelve to one. Okay, moving on to report number one oh six from the Arts Recreation Community Policy Committee.
Thank you. It's my pleasure, sir. Uh, report one oh six from Art, uh, he's going to leave in a second. Thank you.
With by Council Neil, seconded by Council Alson, that report number one oh six from the Arts Recreation Community Policies Committee, let me see it down.
So there are two clauses. The first is new provincial charter funding initiatives and requirements, and the second is the twenty sixteen arts prize that the committee would work on. Without a payment, I go separate. So we will vote on them as a whole, all was in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Okay, we have nothing from the committee as a whole. Uh, information reports, if you have a question, uh, staff, uh, please raise your hand. Uh, so number one, report on agreements executed under delegated approval and signing authority July first, twenty seventeen to September thirty of twenty seventeen. Number two, tender and contract awards subject to the established criteria for delegation of authority for the month of August of twenty seventeen. Okay, we have no information reports from members of council. Uh, miscellaneous business. Uh, we do have a couple of, uh, notions here first, uh, that is requested by the CRPS RSD Foundation, Complex Regional Pain Center, Reflex Syndicative Distuthy. The council will play November sixth, twenty seventeen as CRPS RSD awareness and color the world orange day for the city of Kingston. And the votes, due by Council Neil, seconded by Council Alson. All was in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Uh, number two, that is requested by Kingston Inviting Premise Organization, the council will play November seventeenth, twenty seventeen as World Prematurity Day in the city of Kingston. Due by Council Bob, seconded by Council George. All was in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Number three, that is requested by Francophone Immigration Support Network, East of Ontario, uh, East of Ontario, the council will play October thirtieth to November third, twenty seventeen as National Francophone Immigration, we cemente national, devene national Francophone in the city of Kingston. And the votes, due by Council Neil, seconded by Premier Turner. All was in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Okay, on to new motions. Uh, number one, moved by Council McLaren, seconded by Council Hutchison. Whereas workers injured on the job turn to the Workplace Safety and Insurance Board for medical or financial assistance, and whereas navigating the WSID system has become our owners for workers, and whereas non-union workers may access assistance with dealing with the WSID through the office of the Worker's Advisory, and whereas non-represented injured workers in the Kingston catchment area from Trenton to Brockville may only access the office of the Worker Advisory in either Scarborough or Ottawa, putting an unfair burden on those workers. And whereas those two locations are currently experiencing caseload backlogs in one year or more, and whereas local advisory resources such as legal finance require non-represented, uh, injured workers to have an income level that is below the poverty line, thus disqualifying those from representation, and whereas more new jobs in Kingston and more businesses in Kingston is good for the local economy, therefore be resolved that City Council of Kingston requests that the province of Ontario set up an office of the Worker Advisory in Kingston as soon as possible, and that this motion be sent to Kathleen Wynn, the Premier of Ontario, Kevin Flynn, Minister of Labor, Conservative Walla, and the Committee of Kingston and the ICS. Council McLaren, if you have it.
Thank you. So the focus of this is, uh, social justice and economic development, and it's often not the case that we go together, but in this case, they do. The, um, non-union workers that suffer injuries right now have to leave Kingston, probably to Scarborough or Ottawa. There, they have to wait usually a day. Thank you. Let's be closer to the mic. There, they have to spend most of the day, uh, trying to get their services down through the WMSIB. But what I've heard is that the province of Ontario has already budgeted money for another office, for the expansion, or the expansion of existing offices. This money is already budgeted, it's just been sitting there, they haven't actually done something with it. So what this is an ask is to spend the money here in Kingston, set up an office here that comes with new employment, it comes with the ability to attract people to come and spend a day in Kingston while they're going through this. And it makes things a lot easier for these workers, who also, at the current stage, have to go, have to become essentially impoverished before they're able to get care of them. Now, this is good for social justice, but importantly, it's also good for economic development, because more income into the city, more visits into the city. This is something that we can benefit more than say Scarborough or Ottawa. So for these reasons, I'm hoping that you guys will support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, we will call the vote on motion number one, all was in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Uh, due motion number two, moved by Council George, seconded by Mayor Patterson, that Matthew Wilson, Senior Advisor, Association of Municipalities of Ontario, EMO, be authorized to appear before council on November seventh, twenty seventeen to provide a briefing with respect to EMO's What's Next Ontario Local Share, opposed, action plan. Council George?
Thank you, Worship, and, uh, through you. Um, yes, so what's happening now through, uh, EMO is, uh, presentation, uh, to local councils in order to bring everybody up on, uh, where we are at this present time with the local share, uh, action plan that we've been discussing now for the last couple of years. And I'm sure that the package that we provided to each and every one of you, some months ago, we've all been through it, and understand what our game plan is and the rationale, the reasoning behind it. Uh, and, uh, we felt that it was probably a very appropriate time to, uh, bring a, to council a formal, a little more formal brief on the subject and allow for us to question the act. So, uh, Matthew Wilson, who I thought would be, uh, making a presentation to council, and, uh, is provided that this, uh, motion passes this evening, and we're about to do so, so a certain opening overall allows that opportunity to explain to you what we have been discussing at home, and what our goals currently are, to assist in, uh, the funding of infrastructure programs, teaching every municipality and providing.
I think this is a great motion to be forwarded. I'm just curious, I don't think it needs necessarily an amendment, but it might be an opportunity to invite those municipal elected officials in the immediate neighboring area to come for the briefing as well. Because I'm sure that EMO is available to go to all three hundred and some municipalities in the province. So neighboring councillors may very well come for twenty minutes to hear the presentation.
Counsel George.
Thank you, through your worship. We've had discussions on that, and we will through EMO be, in fact, I guess it can be a form of invitation by making our joint municipalities aware that in fact, you will be here that evening, and they're certainly welcome to attend and listen to the briefing as well. There's, you know, as you know, four hundred and fourteen municipalities across the province, and I know that some of the larger urban municipalities have already had this briefing, and they've done exactly that. They've encouraged some of the smaller, more rural municipalities to attend and so they can understand the benefits for them as well. Because a lot of people feel the benefit is geared more to the large urban municipalities, when in fact, it's going to assist everyone. So that's a very good point, Counsel Neil. Thank you.
Counsel Patterson. Let's move to a question to the our individual representatives. Thanks for bringing this forward. Glad to support it. I was just wondering, in line with what Counsel Neil was saying, would it be, and maybe this question would be important, would it be possible for representatives of nearby governments or representatives to be able to submit questions? Maybe to submit questions in writing, or give them an opportunity to question? And not everything coming from us, we could maybe open our doors a bit for them and give them the opportunity to ask questions that they have. Counsel George.
The only thing I would add to that is that most, all municipalities have in fact been given the opportunity to respond through emails, phone calls, and participating in that EMO. They did, they passed EMO conference in Ottawa in August, and allowed to present any questions they may have at that time. But I think for this particular briefing, it would be for our municipalities' participation, and they may in fact have a number of questions themselves following the briefing, but they would have the opportunity to make those questions known to the EMO represented by the following meeting or through future discussions.
I think that what I would add to that is a lot of the speaker rules are quite clear, but the only people who can ask questions during the briefing are members of council. That being said, if none of the points people are sending any questions in advance or from contacting any of us, they may not ask questions on that behalf. Counsel.
So I guess what I'm asking, perhaps the clerk could offer just exactly that. I know we'll speak to that, that's why I'm running. But the reason is, is that we're at KECO for the last so many years. We've been trying to expand our reach to other municipalities which happen to be rural all around us. And we have significant companies like FAYI, TULAC, which has reached into those areas. And I think if one offers these things, you help to open the doors to other people. If you don't make them ask, you offer it, and you are open to it, and you demonstrate open to it. So what I'm asking, and I'm asking to change the motion, all this is all what goes on around the issue. If the clerk and the mayor, perhaps in some form or way, offer the opportunity to them to pose questions to the speaker, then we can demonstrate that we really want to work with them. And that's, I think, my future.
Mr. Clerk.
To your worship, we think that's mandatory to let some neighboring municipalities know about the briefing. But when it comes down to the questions, I don't think I would be prepared to ask them to provide us questions that we can ask the briefer after offices, the city of Kingston production. Anybody's able to come to the meeting, but as the mayor indicated previously, it's members of council that involves that question, so I wouldn't want to put something out there that says send us a question, which is to answer.
I said what I have to say.
I keep, is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, we'll call the vote in on new motion number two. All was in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, we have no further notions of any notices in motion. They seem not as quite plausible as the one that exists.
Moved by Counsel McCleod, and seconded by Counsel Stroud. That demands a city council meeting number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two, on Tuesday, October four, two thousand seventeen, be confirmed.
All was in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. We have a table of documents and a number of communications. Is there any of that business? Counsel Clerk, last to vouch.
Moved by Counsel O'Sinn, seconded by Counsel Shaw. That vials one through four and seven be given in their first and second meeting.
All was in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Moved by Counsel O'Sinn, seconded by Counsel Shaw. That clause number eleven point three four, a violation of, that clause number eleven point three four, a violation of two thousand and ten dash one, be suspended for the purposes given by vials three and four, three weeks.
All was in favor? Opposed? That carries.
Moved by Counsel O'Sinn, seconded by Counsel Shaw. That vials two through four, five, as amended, six and seven be given in their third meeting.
All was in favor? Opposed? And that carries. Motion to adjourn, moved by Counsel Bowman, seconded by Deputy Mayor Turner. All was in favor? Opposed? Deputy Mayor Turner. Thank you very much.